I think we'll call the November 2nd Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Dean? Here. Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Cange?
Present.
Mr. Spinelli?
Here.
Mr. Robinson, Mr. Strike, and Mr. Sporhays have been excused. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 6th, 20th, September 21st, and October Ms. Dean has moved. Mr. Spinelli has seconded. I know there was a correction from Mr. Spring on the September 21st minutes. We have that correction.
Mr. Chair, with respect to the minutes of September 21st, 2012, I would point out there's a correction I'd like to make on page four of eight. Instead of -- this case involved the, let's see, the rezone along Benson Boulevard. And the motion, this refers to the motion that was made to approve it, and one of the conditions, number one, which the minutes say read "The southern, at least part of it, 75 feet of the property should be developed as multi-family use." That, and I went back and listened to the minutes, the actual minutes or the tape, and that was in reference to another part of the motion. It was supposed to be the exact wording that was proposed by the developer, and that did not include at least a part of it. So, it should be read "The southern 75 feet of the property."
Thank you, Mr. Spring. As you made that motion, I'm sure you're familiar with it. Is that okay with you, Ms. Dean and Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Yeah. The minutes are passed as amended. Thank you. Moving on to Special Order of Business Case, I'm sorry, C1. Any disclosures this evening? Mr. Spring?
I have none.
Mr. Walker?
None.
No.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Mr. Spinelli?
No.
And I have no disclosures either. Case C2, 2015-0113. We have staff's presentation.
Mr. Chair, this is an information item, and staff doesn't review or present on these.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McConnell?
My name is Mark Frutiger, F-R-U-T-I-G-E-R. I'm the project manager for the 27th Avenue Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project with Arnhem Consultants. With me tonight from the Public Works Department, PMNE, is Lori Skanki. She's the project manager, as well as Brooke Blessing. She's the project administrator. I also have with me with Arnhem Consultants, Juan Lee, sitting right there. She's responsible for the planning and the public involvement aspect of the project. And then finally, I have Jeannie Bowie with Kine Engineering. She's helping us out with the traffic, safety, and parking aspect of the project. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the project goals of the 27th Avenue Project, 47th Avenue Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project. It's basically a bicycle plan and pedestrian plan implementation project. It was ranked pretty high in the pedestrian plan. Actually, it was number 15 out of 320 projects, so it's a high priority project as far as pedestrian safety is concerned. The goals are to promote year-round walking, encourage biking, and reduce conflicts between motorized and non-motorized users along 27th Avenue. The corridor was identified as a bicycle boulevard in the bicycle plan. A bicycle boulevard is a new concept to Alaska, I believe, so I'd like to give you a quick introduction in what a bicycle boulevard entails. I hope you can see the screen up there. There's kind of an idealized rendition of a bicycle boulevard. Essentially, a bicycle boulevard are streets with low motorized traffic volumes and speeds designated and designed to give bicycle travel priority. Bicycle boulevards use signs, pavement markings, speed and volume management techniques to discourage through trips by motorized vehicles and create safe, convenient bicycle crossings of major arterial roads. There are, however, a few prerequisites before a street could be considered to be a bicycle, become a bicycle boulevard, such as the volume of cars should be below 3,000 per day, speeds should be below 25 miles an hour. It's typically an alternative to a busier arterial road, such as Northern Lights Boulevard along West 27th Avenue. And it makes a lot of sense to make it a neighborhood connection between, say, parks and schools. Even though the bicycle plan calls for all of 27th Avenue between Minnesota and Blueberry Road to become a bicycle boulevard, the project will work to identify the most appropriate non-motorized solution for 27th Avenue, which may not be a bicycle boulevard for each of the three segments. The existing conditions: The project limits extend from Minnesota Drive across Spinnard Road, across Arctic Boulevard to Blueberry Road. It's approximately 3/4 of a mile long. The context of the roadway changes dramatically from the western part in Minnesota to the eastern part near Blueberry Road. The western part is predominantly commercial activity. I'm sure you all are familiar with the restaurant that is located near that part of the road. The middle segment is mainly residential, and then the far eastern segment is kind of akin to an alley. It's a narrow, strip-paved road that serves backdoor access to the businesses that front Northern Lights Boulevard. There's a high percentage of walking and biking along 27th Avenue due to the nature of the neighborhood, as well as the number of schools and the bicycle shops that are along, that are in the vicinity. The only dedicated bicycle, or, sorry, the only dedicated pedestrian facilities are on the first segment between Minnesota and Spinnard. On both sides, there's a narrow, I believe it's a four-foot wide sidewalk. Intersections with Spinnard and Arctic are both offset without any sort of crossing aids. There's a high parking demand, particularly along the western segment between Minnesota Drive and Spinnard Road, and the right-of-way varies in width between 25 feet and 60 feet. Stakeholder involvement that we have completed to date: We've set up a project website, which allows folks to go out, take a look at the documents that we've completed so far. It gives notice of upcoming meetings, and people are allowed to leave a comment if they choose to do so. We've also held a technical training workshop this summer to introduce this new concept of bicycle boulevards, as well as get feedback. We held an open house at REI, which seemed like an appropriate place to hold an open house for a bicycle and pedestrian project, and we held an agency stakeholder meeting. So, the issues that we have identified, the most obvious issue is a lack of adequate pedestrian and bicycle facilities. It's just very much evident by the picture up on the screen. There's also a high parking demand resulting from commercial activities, which exasperates the following: The existing sidewalks are often blocked by parked cars, as you see in the picture up there, and that causes limited side distance for people trying to leave a business through the driveway, or in some cases, the access is completely blocked because there's clearly no delineation between what is parking and what is not parking. The offset intersections at the two major crossings, Spinnard and Arctic, are very busy. As a matter of fact, there's very few crossing opportunities available during the peak hours, such as the school dismissal. There's numerous right-of-way encroachments up and down the corridor, such as landscaping retaining walls. Street maintenance has indicated to us that there's challenges with clearing the snow due to the number of parked cars, as well as issues like dumpsters. And the traffic volumes for this type of road are fairly high. There are over 4,000 ADT in the western segment, which is near the, between Minnesota and Spinnard. And the speeds are also pretty high, which of course is felt by people who want to walk along the roadway or bike along the roadway due to the very narrow nature once both sides are filled with parked cars. And the drainage is also of concern, especially in the eastern segment, the part that's just strip paved. So, based on these issues that we have identified, we've come up with a number of concepts. The concepts involve the implementation of planning and engineering tools that can already be found throughout Anchorage, so most of these are not new. And the concepts can be grouped into a number of categories, starting with connectivity. So, the first thing is, we've got to make sure that 27th Avenue is connected to adjacent trails, such as the A Street pathway or the Spinnard Road Trail. Speed management techniques: In order to reduce the speed, there are many tools available, such as horizontal or vertical deflection, chicane speed humps, or a reduced speed limit is another concept. Volume management: The vehicle volume is too high along the east-westernmost segment of the road. That's something we've already identified. So, like I mentioned earlier, in order to be a bicycle boulevard, you want to be below 3,000 ADT, so that first segment's around 4,100 ADT. So, in the design study report phase, we're going to look at alternatives that involve some type of multi-use shared pathway in lieu of a bicycle boulevard, most likely. Other concepts that we could deploy to reduce the volume are ride-in, ride-out, or even a partial closure. The intersections of Spinnard and Arctic are, is one of the key components of the project that could either make or break this. They're very challenging due to the offset, the width of the crossing, it's four lanes at Spinnard, the volumes of the cars traveling up and down those major streets, and then also the proximity of 27th Avenue and the crossing to the signal at Northern Lights Boulevard. The project will study the feasibility of pedestrian-activated signals, such as rectangular rapid flashing beacons, median extensions, and offset crosswalks, just to name a few. Finally, branding and wayfinding. Branding and wayfinding will help the community recognize the corridor as a bicycle boulevard and will help folks coming from other pathways to get to 27th Avenue instead of Northern Lights Boulevard to continue east-west. Parking: The above concepts, or the concepts I just mentioned, will have an impact on parking, so alternative concepts are being considered to maximize the available space for parking, such as back-and-head-out angle parking. We would like to replace, if possible, the rolled curb with vertical face curb to prevent cars from parking partially up on the sidewalk, except at driveways, of course. We would like to provide, if possible, a physical barrier between the back of the sidewalk and the adjacent business parking. Currently, today, the parking lot, in most cases, butts up against the sidewalk, and there's no delineation between what is parking and what is sidewalk, which is especially difficult to see in the winter months. And then curb extensions to delineate and protect business apartment access is another concept that we will evaluate further in the DSR. And of course, once we go through the DSR phase of the project, we will coordinate any of these alternatives with ongoing projects, such as the Spinnard Road Project. What are the next steps? Currently, we are scoped to go through the pre-draft DSR. The funding that's available right now is only up to that point. Once more funding becomes available, we will continue on, finalize the DSR, the DSR, and we will present to you again at that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got a couple of questions. Ms. Dean, and then Mr. Spring.
Through the chair, my first question is, property acquisition. Since the right-of-way is as narrow as 25 feet, I assume you're going to have some property acquisition. Is any of it residential?
Through the chair, Commissioner Dean, yes, some of it is residential. However, at this point, we have not identified any right-of-way acquisition, but at this point, we also cannot rule that out, so that's something we're going to explore further in the design study report.
Okay. There were over 70 residential properties that were taken by the DOT in the last two years. I don't want to see any more properties lost in the city of Anchorage, especially when they're lower-income housing, rentals, things like that, that's difficult to be replaced. Just something to keep in mind. One of the other things that's difficult is, of course, businesses losing parking, and that's a really sensitive spot on 27th, because there are a lot of businesses that use that. How are you guys going to approach that?
Through the chair, Commissioner Dean, we're going to approach that very carefully. That is definitely an issue that we have identified. We commissioned a parking utilization study as part of this concert report. It's actually part of the package that you have. And what we found predominantly in the westernmost segment, which is the one that you're referring to, I assume, the parking, the on-street parking peaks on, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeannie, on weekday evenings as well as weekend evenings. The overnight parking is fairly low, so what that is telling us is that the parking along that segment of 27th Avenue is used predominantly by people that visit the businesses, but not by the residents that live along 27th Avenue. So, like I mentioned in my presentation, there's going to be a balance that needs to be met between the purpose and need of the project, which is a pedestrian and bicycle or a pedestrian safety improvement project, as well as the needs of the businesses. Right now, the corridor is from one end to the other essentially a free-for-all for parking, which is one of the problems.
Okay. And then the last question I had was on page 23 of your book. How do you plan on plowing that type of situation? I see that it's very, very difficult to remove snow, and you're going to have to haul it. I don't see any other way to deal with that particular type of intersection.
Through the chair, Commissioner Dean, are you referring to 23, the big bold 23, or the 23 on the little 23? Because I know the page numbers are offset a little bit. I'm sorry.
Well, let's see. It would be before figure 16. So, the pullout page, figure 16, a few pages prior to that is page 23. There's other examples in there. That's not the only one of odd-type things in the center of the road that will be very difficult. The roundabouts, for example, are extremely difficult to plow and remove snow, and visibility is very difficult. Just something, you know, to keep in mind on that type of an intersection. Looks great in a drawing, but in the winter in Anchorage, pretty tough.
Yeah. Through the chair, Commissioner Dean, I appreciate that, and everything always looks nice without snow on the ground. That's exactly the reason why we had the agency scoping meeting, and we invited people from street maintenance to come talk to us, and they provided us feedback very similar to what you just told me. So, that's definitely something we're going to consider as the project moves on.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Mr. Spring?
Yes. I'd like to compliment you on the very detailed report. A lot of good information in there. One of the more detailed design study reports. It's not a design study report, is it?
It's a concept report.
One of the more detailed reports I've seen. And I just want to point out, though, with regard to parking, that you do have a, you have provided a parking utilization report as the appendix, so I'm assuming, I haven't read it all through, but I'm assuming you've done your analysis and you're looking, you've taken this issue seriously enough to analyze the needs and the supply.
Through the chair, Commissioner Spring, yeah, you're absolutely correct. We have looked at that, and the parking utilization study examines existing parking. It examines the businesses and the residences and the apartment buildings along the corridor, and then evaluated their need, and then did a, an analysis on how much is available and how much is needed.
So, through the chair, what was your conclusion in this report, then, as far as the supply, median, the demand with the implementation of this project?
Through the chair, Commissioner Spring, I'd like to defer to our expert on the subject matter, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. Jeannie?
Good night. I'm Jeannie Bowie, B-O-W-I-E. So, the, in most areas of this corridor, kind of, there's enough parking to meet demand. There were a couple of places where you could see people were kind of overparking. I think there was, in the peakest hours, in the most peak hours, you'd have like 120% or something of the available parking was used, meaning people are kind of making up their parking spaces. So, there's definitely, and then there's other areas very close to that where parking is very underutilized. So, some of it may be trying to equalize that parking demand.
So, that was, that's primarily through the chair, the area around the Bear Tooth, I'm assuming, where the, it was 120%?
Correct.
So, you're looking at taking some parking on the street away, off of the street around the Bear Tooth?
So, if I understand the concept correctly, we have some ideas that would increase parking that back-in angle parking. Actually, you could fit more cars in a linear curb length than parallel parking. So, if that would go, that, you could maybe decrease the amount of space for curbside parking and actually increase parking. On the other hand, as we use the full right-of-way of the road, that may actually encroach on some space that the businesses are already using for parking. So, it's not a fitness being analyzed yet.
Through the chair, I guess I would recommend informally that you try to at least maintain the parking there. I think I understood that Bear Tooth is looking for some solutions to the parking in that area, and maybe that might help. Maybe it won't be such an issue in the future. That would probably do a lot more than what you can do about the parking, but, okay. Thank you for your information.
Yes.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yeah, I was just curious about the east end, where the plan kind of dead-ends into Blueberry, and wasn't sure if there was a right-of-way that continued through to C Street, and if you looked at pushing that through. I just haven't traveled this path. I know that you might be directing a lot of people to cut through the bank parking block.
Through the chair, Commissioner Spinelli, that's a very good point. No, the right-of-way ends just off the page, off of figure 18, and it becomes private property at that point. So, yeah, that's an issue that we recognize, hence the need for us to study connectivity and issues like, things like wayfinding, to help folks get to the right place and not direct them towards private property.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Walker?
The figure that you showed at the beginning of your presentation had two-way traffic, automobile traffic with, yeah, with a bicycle, looked like bicycle traffic in the center. But much of the figures that you show that are like from an aerial perspective, it looks like there's places where, I mean, are there places where you would eliminate automobile traffic altogether?
Through the chair, Commissioner Walker, no, at this point, we're not considering eliminating any automobile traffic.
So, what exactly is happening to the west of Blueberry, between Blueberry and Arctic? I see little bicycle, white bicycle figures on the drawing, but I don't, if there's bicycles moving both directions, I don't see a lot of room for automobile traffic and/or parking. Can you explain how that works?
Sure. Through the chair, Commissioner Walker, one of the options that we're looking at for that particular segment is to do a, let's see here. If you take a look at figure 19, we could restrict access from one direction, either make it a full-blown one-way roadway, or else just restrict access from one side, but have it be a two-way for cars once you get past the neck-down. So, that roadway is currently, edge of pavement, edge of pavement is currently about 18 feet wide, so in order to be a two-way roadway according to the municipal standards, it would have to be considerably wider. So, getting back to the question earlier about acquiring right-of-way, if you have 25 feet of available right-of-way, but you don't want to acquire any additional right-of-way, you're going to have to do something, because two-way traffic along with a sidewalk is probably not going to work. But that's something that we will have to evaluate further in the design study report. It's a very good point, though. So, the white symbols are the sharos, the shared lane markings, just like you see up on the figure there, designating it as two-way bicycle traffic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a couple of quick comments. I'd like to commend you on sending out so many notices. I read 1,600 and some odd notices were sent out, so that's amazing. And I'm just curious, how many people showed up to the REI event?
Juan, do you remember?
Between 30 and 40.
Between 30 and 40.
Have you received a lot of comments via the online forum? Ma'am, just if you could come up and state your name, just so we have it on record, just for that.
She has all the numbers.
The 30 or 40 people.
Hi, my name is Juan Lee. Last name is spelled L-E. Through the chair, the question, I believe, was how many people attended the open house that we held at REI? And the answer is between 30 and 40 people signed into that open house. We also received a number of online comments and telephone calls supporting the project, and a lot of them came from people who lived in the apartments around the area, along the corridor, and then some of the businesses, some of the employees of the businesses, actually, that didn't own cars that lived in the area, and so they were excited to see some pedestrian amenities and safety improvements happen.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
With no other comments in the queue, I appreciate your time and effort in all this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did a good work. Before we move on, it was brought to my attention, just so we don't sit here all night, I'm going to break protocol a little bit and ask that Case S1-2221, which was originally in G2, be moved next. The petitioner, because we have a short board, meaning that all five members would have to vote in favor of the action tonight, the petitioner has requested that we postpone this. Is that correct, Mr. Whitfield?
Through the chair, commissioners, yes, the applicant has actually requested to postpone to the next available meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Dean has made the motion. Do I have a second to postpone that? Case? Mr. Spinelli has seconded. All in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. That way, you don't have to sit here the rest of the night to get to the postponement. Thank you very much. For those of you who come out.
Oh, it's this green.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Mr. Spinelli, seconded by Ms. Dean. I know, Mr. Spring, you wanted to poll something?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to poll Consent Agenda D1C, Case Resolution 2015-41.
Did anyone else want to poll any other resolutions? Seeing no one else, the consent agenda is, well, I guess we have to vote on that. There's no objections to the consent agenda? That passes? Give us just a moment to set up the presentation.
Excuse me?
She's just, she's setting up the next case, so you want to discuss your...
Okay. This is the resolution approving the draft design study report for the Northern Access Study. I think everyone was here during that time. I looked at the findings in particular, and it seemed like the findings were fine as far as they went, but they all addressed the need for the facility, which was kind of an ancillary question that we were trying to address. It wasn't the main issue, and it seems inappropriate to have every finding related to that and no findings related to the actual design, which we discussed at length, and we made numerous recommendations about the design. So, I have written five findings that I can read off to you, and I gave it a copy to the secretary, that relate to, I think, our discussion, more or less, about the design issues. Should I read them and propose that to be included in the resolution?
I think if you made a motion and included your recommendations, if I got a second, that would take care of...
Do you want me to read the...
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Additional findings, number five. Intersection Northern Lights Boulevard in Burgah is a well-used pedestrian crossing with a history of pedestrian vehicular accidents, and enhanced crosswalk treatment needs to be incorporated in the design of the new four-way intersection in order to accommodate this pedestrian traffic. Number six. Number six, sidewalks and multi-use paths along the Northern Access Facility needs to be separated by a minimum of seven feet as recommended in the adopted Anchorage Pedestrian Plan, Page 42. Seven, the pedestrian bridge at the south end of the project, at Providence Drive, is very important to ensure an adequate connection between the UAA Consortium Library and APU. Eight, the drainage impacts of the project are concerned with respect to the water level and flow of nearby Chester Creek. Nine, some members, I think that's me, express concern regarding the impact of the project on the APU ski trail system, especially with the elimination of the middle pedestrian bridge. And I think that covers the ones I remember being discussed.
Thank you, I have a motion. Mr. Walker, seconds. Those findings, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, use our machines.
So we're clear, these are findings? Okay, but we are adding those findings and approving the resolution?
Correct.
All shot here, okay.
And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Spring. Next case on our regular agenda is 20150100, Context Sensive Solutions Transportation Project Site Plan Review Design Study Report for Jewel Lake Road Widening, 88th Avenue to Strawberry Road. We have the representative, thank you.
Good evening. Once again, I'm Jeannie Bowie, B-O-W-I-E, with Kenny Engineering, here to present to you the design study report for the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Jewel Lake Road Widening, 88th Avenue to Strawberry Road. The project limits for this project are from just north of 88th Avenue on Jewel Lake Road to just south of Strawberry Avenue. The project will not touch the signalized intersections at 88th or Strawberry, and so the existing improvements at those signals, including the raised medians, will remain. This is a Highway Safety Improvement Program project, which means it needs to focus on crash reduction. And the primary crashes that we've seen on this roadway in this study area are rear-end crashes, many of which are caused by drivers slowing to turn left in the through lanes, head-on crashes when drivers cross the center line, and we have seen a pattern of nighttime crashes. Because it's a Highway Safety Improvement Program project, we want to minimize impacts to right-of-way or utilities and the environment, things that would slow the project down so that we can get the improvements on the road and reduce crashes right-of-way. And all of the improvements need to be safety-related in order to use the Highway Safety Improvement We considered basically four different alternatives. The no-build alternative is not doing anything. The second alternative would be to put it in a two-way left-turn lane with a rural cross-section, so that would be shoulders and ditches on the sides of the road, consistent with how the roadway is right now. So the advantages of this alternative is if it provides a place for the left turners to get out of the through lane to reduce the rear-end crashes, provides separation between the two directions of traffic to reduce the head-on crashes. One of the disadvantages is that it increases the crossing distance for pedestrians, and this is a pedestrian-heavy road. It's got transit on it, so there's people crossing the road to reach their buses, there's schools along the roadway, there's churches along the roadway, residences, so pedestrians are a consideration. And then one of the disadvantages of this first build alternative is that it would have significant impacts to right-of-way and utilities. The second alternative we looked at was the two-way left-turn lane with an urban cross-section. This would be curb and gutter with a piped storm drain system. It provides the same left-turn storage to reduce rear ends and the separation for oncoming traffic to reduce head-on collisions. We still have the pedestrian crossing distance increase, but it does not have the right-of-way and utility impacts of the first alternative. And then the, let's see, the last alternative we looked at was adding in some medians at key intersections. We have two-way left-turn lane most of the corridor, but at key intersections, put in a center median with a left-turn lane. And the advantage of that is that this provides a place for pedestrians to stand so they can cross part of the road and then stand and wait until there's a gap to cross the rest of the road. So the preferred alternative is to put in the two-way left-turn lane for the majority of the corridor, and then put in these striped median with a turn lane at quarter-mile intersections. That would be at 80th, at 82nd, and at 84th. We'll also move the transit stop so that they're at the far side of each of those three intersections. That would encourage pedestrian crossings at these locations where we have the striped median. The project would include five-foot shoulders, which would be adequate for bike travel. On the west side of the project, we would reconstruct the eight-foot multi-use pathway, and typically that would be separated from the back of curb by about seven feet, though where right-of-way is narrow, it would come closer to the road and the pathway would be brought up to the back of curb at the intersections. And then on the east side of the roadway, it would be an eight-foot sidewalk for the majority of the corridor. Right now, the east side doesn't have continuous sidewalk, so it would be adding sidewalk, and that sidewalk would be narrowed at some points where right-of-way is tight and there's like a drop-off or a hill that requires a retaining wall to stay within right-of-way. So we considered basically three options for lighting. One was not doing anything, and the existing lighting is out there on electric poles, and the electric is programmed to be undergrounded about the same time as the construction of this project is to happen. So actually, doing nothing would reduce the amount of light on the roadway. The second option is to update to current standards, which would be lighting the intersections and the left-turn lanes. And then the third option would be continuous lighting. And the current plan is to do the new LED lighting at the intersections, and then there's discussion with the municipality if they agree to maintain the lighting, and continuous LED lighting could be built. Stormwater treatment will meet the Department of Transportation and the MOA standards for stormwater treatment. It's still under investigation exactly what that will mean. It will either be green infrastructure, flow control system, or if there are constraints that keep us from doing that, depending on the groundwater table and right-of-way and such, then we'll use a more traditional oil and grit separator. Public involvement that we've done so far on this project, there's a website, we've gone to the Sandlight Community Council, we held an open house in October of 2014, and there's another open house planned early in 2016. So far, comments have been generally positive for the project. Schedule, we expect the final DSR to be complete in December with 65% plans in hand, environmental document by February, right-of-way acquisition to begin next year, and then construction in 2017 or 2018. So that's what I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Spring, do you have a question?
Yes, it seems like in the staff report, there's some discussion about whether or not to include a raised median, especially at the intersections of Strawberry and 88th Avenue. And appears that the design study report elected to go with a striped median instead of a raised median. Can you explain what the pros and cons of it are? There was an issue raised regarding the cost, for one thing. Maintenance problems associated with that? What is exactly the issue there?
Okay, so through the chair, Commissioner Spring, first of all, at the signalized intersections at Strawberry and at 88th, there is already raised median there, and this project won't touch that. That will remain. The question that we went through in the design study report process was, should we put raised median anywhere else within the corridors, like at those quarter-mile intersections, 82nd and 80th and 84th? And maintenance is a big issue, the cost of maintaining those, the raised medians, and then the snow removal around the raised medians. And based on that consideration, it was determined that we would use striped medians at those intersections.
Continue, question, Mr. Chair. Was there any pedestrian study done associated with this study that you do pedestrian counts or do we have that information?
Through the chair, Commissioner Spring, we did do pedestrian counts. I couldn't tell you what they are right off the top of my head, but there were, I don't know, 10 to 20 people crossing in a several-hour period. There are people crossing the road.
Is that in the report?
It's in the traffic analysis report, which I think is an appendix to the DSR.
And is there any additional information on the number of bus transit users at the stops, information regarding, what's the term?
Riders.
Lighting and disembarking and whatever.
Through the chair, Commissioner Spring, I don't think we, maybe we do have those numbers, do you remember? I think we have them, again, in the traffic analysis report. Which appendix?
Appendix E.
It's in Appendix E, let me see.
I just have A and F, am I missing something? Never mind, I got confused.
It's in there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Ms. Dean, and then Ms. Ferguson.
Through the chair. Thank you for your presentation. The last sentence you said, though, that there would be right-of-way acquisition, but in the book, on Page 10, it said there is no right-of-way acquisition, that everything would happen within the right-of-way. Which is it? Is it a standard phrase that you normally say as part of a project, or?
Through the chair, Commissioner Dean, yeah, I think I'm just hedging that the plan is to not have right-of-way acquisition. It just makes a highway safety improvement project get through a lot faster and get to the saving crashes, but I guess until you're in final design, maybe you don't know. Okay, there is a vacant parcel that we're looking at for the stormwater treatment. That might be right-of-way acquisition.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Ms. Dean? Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I wanted to give some reasons for our, the condition number two about the raised medians. At 88th Avenue, both, as probably everyone knows, Diamond High School is accessed off of there, and I think Shinnick Elementary School as well. And the existing median that was referred to earlier is at best about a foot wide, and it's really inadequate pedestrian refuge, and we thought this is the opportunity to improve on that because it's not likely DOT is going to relook at this particular roadway or this section of it for good many years into the future, and now is the opportunity to take care of that. At the Strawberry Road intersection, there is a median there, and it looks like it's gone in recently. However, it doesn't extend far enough to allow, to really have it work as a pedestrian refuge there. If it were extended a little bit, then it would help that one, so really it's just an extension of the median that's already there at the Strawberry Road intersection. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. I too am curious if it's really, because again, here we're laying the groundwork for improving pedestrian facilities, which we had just heard, we're talking about pedestrian and biking and making Anchorage more friendly to those. Is this recommendation a make it or break it for you that the staff has in their packet? Do you mind?
Jim Amis, Chief of Highway Design, Alaska Department of Transportation, and the recommendation is outside of the limits of the project as currently proposed, which means if we move forward with the recommendation, you have to stop the project, go back, redo the environmental document, and start the process all over. And because the recommendation doesn't address any of the actual reasons for the funding for this project, it's outside of the scope of it. Potentially, if it gets pushed too hard, the project gets killed.
Okay. Mr. Walker?
Ms. Ramison, so am I mistaken, or is one of the reasons for this project not safety?
There are specific safety issues that this project is intended to address where we already have existing accident history or incidents happening.
So what you're saying is this, you have to, I guess I don't understand the funding issues at work here, but you have to address the rear-end automobile accident issue, but you can't address a pedestrian crossing issue, which seems...
When the funding request is put together, it looks for specific areas that have accident issues or other safety issues that are coming up. When the project gets scoped, part of that scoping identifies a beginning point and an ending point. And when this was, this project was scoped, it specifically excluded both of those two intersections. It's the area in between them that has the accident issues that we're trying to address with this very limited scope HSIP funding.
So, okay, the figure I'm looking at includes those intersections, but if I were to go through the other 500 pages of this document, I'm going to find a design that has a terminus at the north side of 88th and the south side of Strawberry? Is that what you're telling me?
I think when Jeannie presented this, she was very clear that the project didn't include work at either of those two intersections.
Okay, I did not understand that, thank you.
Mr. Spring, do you have anything else?
Yes, I'm going to channel our former chair, Jim Ferguson, and what would Jim say? I think he would ask the question, how come we're so far along the project where we can't make any recommendations, and why are we doing this? I'm sorry, I mean, really, seriously, what the design study report, right? Is that what this is?
Yes.
What percent of design is that supposed to be?
Through the chair, Commissioner Spring, I believe we're at 65%.
And that's too late to do a review and make comments and make recommendations? 60%? So it's more than 60%, you're saying? What percent is this?
I believe we're at 65%, sir.
So it is actually 65%?
Through the chair, if I may clarify, Mr. Spring, the design study report is supposed to be a 35%. So when they submit that DSR to us, it is at 35% design. They may be at 65 now because they've continued to work on the project, but that's a 35% submit all.
Okay, well, I'm through the chair, then I would assume that 35, we can make comments, and it wouldn't be too late. So what you're saying is that we didn't get it at 35%?
Through the chair, Ms. Spring, the project is at 65% design. When the project is originally put together and started through the process, specific limit... specific limits are established and funding is set up for a specific project. In this case, the project that was set up was to address the accident issues between the two intersections, specifically the rear-end crashes that were higher than the national averages for this type of facility and those types of considerations. So when the project was scoped with highway safety money, it very specifically limited where the work was going to be happening. The design for the work within those two limits is what we're here to talk about today, not to let this thing keep creeping up to Diamond or out to Raspberry or some other stopping point beyond what was originally scoped.
Well, thank you for the clarification through the Chair. But I think I heard you say that, well, if we make a recommendation, it would kill the project, because you have to go back and redo the environmental study.
That is, in fact, the case in this circumstance, yes.
So this environmental study is done at 35% of the...
The environmental document is done before we start design, sir.
So that would have to be completely redone, then? Okay. Who gives input into the scoping of this? Is that a collaborative process, or is that... I mean, it's frustrating to us, you could understand, right?
It's a collaborative process that includes AMATS as well as the Highway Traffic Safety Engineer for Central Region, Traffic Safety Engineer for FHWA, and the Department of Transportation's representative down in Juneau. They identify where there are accident clusters or areas that specifically are above the national norms. They prioritize them, they rank them. They identify proposed solutions that would help address them. And then those are put into packages that get approved.
And usually, through the Chair, one, just one more question. I'm going to pass you too much more. When that, the HSIP projects are looked at, they also look at pedestrian vehicular accidents as a part of that, I'm assuming?
As part of establishing where the beginning and the ending points are, yes, they do, sir.
And so there was, you found there wasn't a significant pedestrian or bicycle accident problem in on the street?
Not enough to be included in this project's scope, sir.
So it was less than average, then?
Or consistent with the averages.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything from staff?
I just wanted to also mention that in the winter conditions, the striping for the flush medians will be lost, and the pedestrians will be left standing in the middle of the road. The only exception to that is existing median, as I mentioned earlier, at 80th Avenue, and that's only about a foot wide. So we are concerned about the, very concerned about the pedestrian crossings, given that this is transit corridor.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. We're seeing no one else in the queue. What is the will of the body? Mr. Spinelli, you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this case 2015-0100, for the sake of discussion.
Would you like to add any of the department recommendations to your motion?
I would be happy to accept any recommended amendments to my motion.
We just need a second to your motion?
Or I can withdraw my motion if somebody more qualified. I was just trying to get things moving.
Sure, no, I understand. Mr. Walker seconds the motion to approve the design study report?
Well, look, there's a lot of drawings in here. And, I mean, this is part of six inches of paper that I was given on Friday to read in less than a week. So I don't see anything in here that actually shows a terminus of the scope at east or north of 88th and south of Strawberry. But, I don't know, this, it seems to me like we've just wasted our time. If the department is recommending something that we don't have any way of influencing at this point. I would like to include the pedestrian safety in this, but if, I mean, if we're going to derail the whole thing, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So I guess I just wanted to say that. At this point, I'll be supporting the motion, but I'm not terribly thrilled about the fact that this seems to completely defeat the purpose of the context-sensitive process, so to speak. So, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Spring.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's obvious that nothing's going to change if we put this condition in. I mean, you don't have to listen to us, so... But I would like to add a comment, strongly word a comment regarding the lack of consideration for pedestrian safety at signalized intersections in particular during the scoping process of HSIP projects. It should always be a part of the scoping. It should never be excluded from it, ever. They cannot justify that. They should always be looking at pedestrian safety. And to say that it's not in the scope, that's ridiculous. My amendment would be to add wording saying that the Commission believes that pedestrian safety, especially at signalized crosswalks, should be included in all SHIP projects' scoping in the future.
So you'd like to add that as part of an amendment to a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'll accept that.
Ms. Dean?
Yes. Yes.
With regard to the first recommendation, though, that wasn't part of the original motion either. Is that something someone could consider in their amendment? Or does it matter?
I'll make that, add that to my amendment. It just references the design study report, so it should always reference the what we're approving. So I believe that's correct.
So the amended motion for approval, subject to the following conditions, would be one, and then amended two, with Mr. Spring's language? Sound good? We have a motion and a second on the amended language. To use our machines to vote. And that motion carries. Moving along to item FB, case 2015-0108.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe you just voted on the amendment, but you need to vote on the main motion.
Thank you for pointing that out. So back to the original motion, which Mr. Spinelli moved, and Mr. Walker seconded. All in favor? I guess we'll use our machines. Thank you for being so quick. And thank you, Ms. McConnell. My first night as Chair, I'm going to miss a few things here or there.
You're doing a great job.
Moving on to case 2015-0108, which we had a work session on earlier this evening. It's a review and recommendation of the General Government 2016 Proposed Capital Improvement Budget and the 2016 to 2021 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. Mr. Spring?
I'd be willing to make a motion if you think it's appropriate. Do we need to put anything on the record for this, previous?
I think if we want to do any findings after the motion, we can do that. If you're so inclined to make a motion, I'll...
I'll make a motion, then, yes. Recommend approval of the 2016 Capital Improvement Budget and the 2016-2021 Capital Improvement Program with the following conditions, I guess. One, provide copy of documents, CIP and CIB documents to Planning and Zoning Commission earlier in the process to give adequate time for review. That's our standard condition, I think. Two, provide a list of previous year's projects, project implementation at the same time as presentation of the draft documents to Planning and Zoning Commission. Three, ensure consistency with the Metropolitan Transportation Plan project list. Note that two projects were not, that are in the CIP, were not included in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That is Elmo Road between Abbott Road and O'Malley and 92nd Avenue between Old Seward Highway and King Avenue. Four, review need for 59th Avenue exit, West Allen Road to Arctic. Five, add 27th Avenue Bike Boulevard to the Municipality of Anchorage bond package. That's the project we heard today. Six, review list of state-funded projects to ensure that potentially high-priority projects, which may not be funded due to state funding shortfall, are included in the Municipality of Anchorage 2016 bond package. That's all.
We have a second to your motion? Any further discussion?
Just for some findings' sake, I think, for resolution writing. I think we've always been kind of a little bit, you know, behind the curve on this. We always get it late. We always express the same frustrations. I understand, though, in this particular transition time, why that happens. And they were probably under a lot of pressure to get it out. And again, we didn't receive the list of projects that were implemented last year. We've asked for that every time, I think, we see the CIP. And we never seem to get that. And I brought up the issue of the consistency with the Long Range Transportation Plan, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the MTP. Even though some of these projects are probably good projects, I think they need to be reviewed in context with all the rest of the projects, not just arbitrarily put in by who knows who. We don't know who put them in or why. They're just in there, and they pop up. 27th Avenue Bike Boulevard, we heard tonight that that's a project that's waiting for the next phase. I don't know if the Commissioners think it was a good project, but it's, I think it's pretty well thought out. And if it's going to go through this design, we need to ensure that there's some funding. The only way to ensure there's funding is through municipal bonds. State funding isn't going to do it. I can't imagine the state coming up with a grant for this project as well as any other project, to tell you the truth, next year. So either we want to fund this one, or we don't. And also the fact that I think they made, there's some error in logic in the way they distributed the projects between the municipal bond and the state bond package, because in reality, only the municipal bond projects are priorities. By definition, the state bond projects aren't priorities because they probably won't get funded. So look at those projects in the state. If there's some good ones in there that really are, they want, then they better put it in, you know, into the municipal bond package, or it's not going to get done. I think that covers my points.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Any further discussion before we vote on the motion? Please use your machines to vote. And that motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing section. Actually, we have, in G1, we have a request. That's case 2015-0093. We have a memo from Ms. McConnell and Mr. Odell to postpone this case as agreed by the petitioner and the municipality. Does the municipality have anything to add here?
Mr. Chair, this is a very complicated case. It's a large piece of land, which has some floodplain and wetland issues. And the access in the neighborhood is very limited. So the petitioner is very interested in providing a high number of multifamily dwelling units on this property. And the municipality is supportive of that, but we are struggling with traffic issues. So you will see this. It just is being pushed off as we continue to work out the access and traffic. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McConnell. Entertained a motion to postpone case 2015-0093. Ms. Dean moves. Mr. Walker seconds that motion. Hearing no objections, case is postponed. Moving on to case 2015-0099. Petitioners, Municipality of Anchorage. Got a spiel to read, I'm being told. Procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meeting is: One, after the staff presentation is completed on the public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, have 10 minutes. And part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will have five minutes. And individuals testifying will have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have an appeal right relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the Commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at time of filing. May we have the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an amendment to a conditional use to allow a museum extension. And it's also a conditional use for projections into the public airspace on 6th Avenue and A Street. The petitioner's request is to construct a museum addition of 31,000 square feet. The expansion will primarily provide additional gallery space for artwork. This will consist of space to exhibit art from the museum collection as well as space for changing art exhibitions, space for storage, offices expanding the Discovery Center, and a patrons lounge is also provided. The petitioner is also requesting allowance for two proposed projections into the right-of-way, removing the existing clock tower at the corner of 6th Avenue and A Street as part of the project in order to accommodate the expansion. No landscaping is provided, while six trees and lawn at the corner of 6th Avenue and A Street will be removed. I'll pause here, because from this point on, much of the staff report is no longer up to date. Members of the Planning Division, along with Mr. Schutte, met with the library director and the design team last Friday afternoon to discuss the division recommendations. The revised recommendations are part of the lay-on-the-table packet that you got earlier this evening. I think it's the last page of the three that you got. We also sent them out by email later, late this afternoon. I don't know how many of you had an opportunity to see those. Eric is handing out the latest revision. The design team told us that they had recently met with DOT about the projections into the right-of-way. DOT will not allow the projections into the roadway, but we're amenable to projections over the sidewalk. Mr. Carlson, the architect for the project, can explain the particulars of their meeting with DOT. Much of the staff report talks about the importance of the pedestrian experience based on the Downtown Comprehensive Plan and the Core Streetscape Plan. You both, all the Commissioners received copies of those plans, both of which are, both of these plans are adopted plans. We heard them describe the expense that would be incurred by having to redesign the project in order to widen the sidewalk to 12... in order to widen the sidewalk to twelve feet. We noted that their design did not include street lighting or street trees on Sixth Avenue. We reached consensus by having the museum enrich the pedestrian experience by providing building lighting that would light the sidewalk on Sixth Avenue. We also talked about creating an interesting sidewalk surface material rather than simple concrete. The division's thoughts on the sidewalk treatment could include a pattern that echoes the wood fens extended to the sidewalk, or references to the city's history or culture, which is noted in the core streets, streetscape plan, which begins to create a sense of place. We are expecting something notable in the sidewalk treatment that is equal to the iconic downtown building that the museum is becoming. Staff would like to add that we have some reservations with the wood fence, with the wood fens at the ground level, the wood can be easily reached by the public, and we have concerns that people may deface the wood by carving into it. Mr. Carlson responded that the wood fens can be replaced if needed, the cedar is meant to age to a gray color, the replacement fens would not match if replaced at a later date, but Mr. Carlson said these could be treated to closely match the existing degree of aging. In conclusion, we are pleased that the new rendering of the Sixth Avenue cantilever, which achieves a greater degree of transparency, we believe that this revised design enhances the pedestrian experience and helps in balancing the narrower sidewalk width, in that it adds excitement and light to winter evenings. We are also pleased with the additional window area on the first floor along Sixth Avenue.
Thank you. We have a presentation, I believe? I'm sorry, any questions for staff? Mr. Spring?
Just to clarify, what, what set of plans are we approving here? We just got a set laid on the table here, and they appear to be different from what we previously looked at in the packet?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, that's going to be somewhat difficult because of all the, all the number of plans in the packet, some of these are going to replace those. The site plan on the first page, we didn't get, the floor plan, I'm guessing, Mr. Carlson can, can correct me, it may be showing greater extent of windows on that floor plan for the first floor, and the second floor is showing the projection as a more truncated projection, the cantilever, it's not extending out as far as they were earlier. And of course, the rendering has changed, and then the exterior, exterior materials have changed in that they are doing perforated aluminum screen, they had a different aluminum type material earlier, and they are replacing it with this one.
So, through the chair, then there's really two plans that have changed, the elevation, Sixth Avenue view, and the floor plans, well, actually, then the site plan, and the second floor plan, those are the ones that are changed, then.
I believe you're correct.
Can, is that possible to reference that in our motion somehow, when we make a motion? Or just maybe the minutes will reflect that, and we can ensure that that's the correct?
I think if you state on the record, the minutes could reflect that.
Okay. One follow-up question? It seems like we got a problem with the rightway permit from DOT. It doesn't sound like they're going to issue a permit. Is that, did I read that correctly? Or is that something that the petitioner can answer?
I think Mr. Carlson would be best equipped to answer that question, he's, they've recently had a meeting with DOT.
Oh, excellent, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Through the chair, Ms. Ferguson, so can, I mean, I was, we'd been handed these drawings, and so I might have missed, I might have not have been listening as closely as I should have been, I was looking at the new drawings. So, with regard to, say, recommendation number nine, the, the drawing that, the rendering here that we've been given that shows the north side of the new, the new north facade, is that, is that level of, or extent of windows, is that consistent with recommendation number nine? So, and how, I guess, how would these new drawings affect your, the recommendations? That should be my overarching question, I guess.
Through the chair, Mr. Walker, when you mentioned the windows, is that the second floor windows, or the first, the windows on the first floor where the discovery office space is and workshop?
Actually, I'm sorry, I meant, I meant recommendation number ten, but you have restored the transparent glass walls on the Sixth Avenue, second floor building projection, so I see a very large section of glass on that projection, I mean, is that, would that eliminate the need for this recommendation, and are there other recommendations?
Did you see the revised recommendations that we, I, we passed out earlier this evening?
Yeah, that were in our packet on the last page of...
Let me answer your question. We revised some of the recommendations.
No, I'm sorry, I missed the back, I didn't see the, I didn't see the back there. Okay, and then one other question, if I may. You're asking for a, let's, let me make sure this isn't something that, oh, you've eliminated your request for the curb bulb, all right, that was also on the back that I did not see.
Yes.
All right, then, question answered, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for the staff at this point? Mr. Carlson?
Thank you, I'm Michael Carlson, McCullough Carlson-Green Architects, we're the project architect for this exciting project, we're privileged to be the project architect for this project, and I want to apologize upfront for the confusion, this has been a dynamic process, and we meet every week with the museum, and for about an hour or so, and probably half of that time, we talk about aesthetics, so we've been kind of fine-tuning our ideas about the building since we did the initial submittal, and the updated submittal. And then there's the ongoing conversations with DOT, which was mentioned, and at this point in time, DOT has actually recommended to us a procedure which would allow us to do the projection to the back, to the face of the curb essentially, not over the parking lanes, not over the driving lanes, and they've suggested a methodology which would allow the municipality to, to permit that. And so, we still need to follow through with DOT, that was just, I think, last week that they gave us that suggestion, but they do seem to be amenable, or they found a way where they can kind of pass the buck back to the municipality, and its staff, the municipality, the mayor's office, planning staff have all been very supportive of these projections that are really a dynamic part of, of kind of the overall design concept. So, at this point in time, the, again, the plans, apologize, I didn't actually look back at the packet, this is just kind of a, a, a pretified version of the site plan you have had before, the site plan we submitted had more dimensional information. The main difference between this site plan and the previous site plan is just that the projections have been pulled back to the, to the face of the curb. The floor plans are very similar as well, the main, one, main plate that's changed is the exterior rendering which we, we have up here, and as I said, that's kind of a result of ongoing aesthetic discussions with the museum, as well as responding to the input from DOT. So I thought I'd give you a quick run-through on that, and then we can kind of just address whatever questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, real quick, though, did you want to reserve any time for rebuttal? I forgot to ask you that earlier, just in...
It's not, it shouldn't be necessary, no, I'm not concerned about that, but I don't plan on taking all the ten minutes anyway, but stop me if I do. Okay, so, this is, and I also apologize for not getting this to you a little sooner, we actually just had our meeting with planning staff on Friday, and our rendering guy kind of worked over the weekend to kind of come up with a concept, because we wanted to be able to show you what, what you were approving, and so this is our current vision, the museum likes the direction we're going, one thing I can tell you is that we'll continue to kind of refine it and tweak it a little bit, but the composition is, is, is pretty solid, both in terms of the way the museum looks at it, and it sounds like planning staff is also pretty supportive of it as well. So the main differences in, between what you saw before and what we're seeing now is the articulation of this projection element. Previously, it extended out twenty-some feet past the property line, had that angle which kind of oriented it towards, towards the Sixth Avenue traffic, and depending on which version you looked at, it had a wraparound glass, or it had kind of a focus portal in the last one you saw. And, so now we pulled it back to meet the requirements of DOT, and maintained the wraparound glass element, which is important to planning staff. One of the concepts that's really important to the museum as well is to be able to make that connection, both from inside the museum out to the city, but maybe even more importantly, from folks that drive by and walk by that might not otherwise come to the museum, to really be able to look in and see some activity and some excitement in the museum itself. So, we're proposing a transparent glass, we're going to use the clearest glass you can buy, and so they'd be able to look in both day and night. And the other major change was in terms of materials, we had a metal aluminum flatlock siding on the previous rendering rendition, and we've transitioned our thinking to a perforated screen for a number of aesthetic reasons, and also to begin to filter the daylight a little bit, because we've got to be able to control daylight reaching those kind of valuable paintings. So those are kind of the primary differences in the, in the two renderings that you saw and the changes that, that we've made since the updated submittal a while back.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, that concludes your presentation.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe we have some questions from some of the commissioners. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I, I just have a, one question, and, and this is, I'm, I'm going off the commission after six years, and one of the things we worked on was Title 21 and the changes to Title 21. Here in about a month or so, two months, we're no longer going to be able to use the old Title 21. You submitted this under the old Title 21, and I'm really just curious why you chose the old code versus the new code.
It's a pretty simple explanation, the new code doesn't have any, doesn't have any, a section written for this particular zone in the B2E at the point, at that point in time, I don't know if it does yet, maybe staff can answer that, but at that point in time, there was no reference point for us to build in this, in zone under the current, under the new Title 21.
Interesting, thank you.
Yeah.
I was just going to fill in what Mr. Carlson has said, that the new code does not include the B2A, B2B, or B2C zoning districts, rewriting downtown zoning districts to comply with the downtown comprehensive plan is a project for the department that was started in, I want to say 2006 or '07, but resources from the main code took away from that, so that is something that still needs to be done. In the meantime, even though the old code will expire for pretty much everything, it will still live on for the B2 districts. Thank you.
Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I'm glad you resolved the, the issues with the staff report, I don't, I was going to ask you all kinds of questions about that, but it seems like everything's resolved pretty much. I'm a little bit disappointed that couldn't expand the sidewalk, you know, a little bit more, looks like, though, that, that was where you chose to add on, or that was the only place to add on, was towards the Sixth Avenue side, so it would definitely shrink the gallery space if you moved it back.
And one of the particular challenges we had, have with this project is we're building over the top of the existing building, and it, and the museum can't, can't afford, or certainly doesn't want to close down that existing museum and their workshop spaces in order to accommodate the construction. So, one of our strategies was to utilize that available space, yard space, to put our infrastructure, our seismic bracing, and our mechanical rooms and that sort of thing, so we don't have to go in and close down the Discovery Center in particular to, to build this building, so that's one of the reasons we're kind of utilizing, maximizing our utilization of that space that's available.
Oh, thanks for that clarification, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, it's a unique, and, and interesting problem to build over the top of a building that was built in the '60s and the '70s.
Anything further, Mr. Spring? Mr. Walker, you had a question?
One is, has no relevance on panel vote tonight, but why, why not continue and remodel the facade between the, the old-new museum and this new addition of, you know, the...
This little piece right here?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that seems like the most unsightly part of the entire structure.
Well, you know, it's a, it's very, this whole thing's a very interesting aesthetic challenge, it's kind of set up by the postmodern design that was done by Mitchell Jurgel in the eighties, and the pristine glass boxes that Chipperfield did in 2010, 2006, and so part of the conversation we've had in our meetings is that, the, trying to create a building that, that fits with those two buildings, and, but still has its own unique identity, and that's part of the, kind of the material exploration, the verticality of the wood relating to the Chipperfield, but having kind of a solid material quality and a kind of coloration that relates more to the eighties edition. And there was actually some very practical reasons why we, we actually had our eye on building over the top of the rest of that existing building, but the museum collections are underneath that portion of the building, and to move those collections is a colossal endeavor, and to put columns down through those very sensitive spaces would really drive the museum to have to remove those collections. So building over the top of this section of the, of the building was explored, but not practical at this point in time. But, on another hand, you know, having a section of that original building is kind of a touchstone, to see that, those Alex Combs fascia panels, is, I think, also a little piece of our history that, that maybe even though it may look a little bit like it's kind of in-between and squished in-between, I think there's some value in, in actually preserving a little bit of that, so we've gotten to enjoy that, not so much the Transformers, and that's why, you know, we appreciate staff's comment that if we can do a better job of screening those Transformers, I think we'll all be a little happier.
So I do have a real question, but thank you for answering that one.
Okay, that's a real question for a designer, that's a real question.
As it pertains to the case, so now that the drawings have been modified, the department has made new recommendations, you, I would imagine, are familiar with their current set of recommendations?
Correct.
And can you accept those?
Yes.
Or none of those are going to derail this project at all, or?
No, no, they've been, they've been very, very helpful, we've kind of worked through the issues, and, and we can certainly work with them on these recommendations, we have no problem there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, you have about five minutes for rebuttal, and we'll open the public testimony part of the case. Anyone wishing to testify in case 2015-0099? Anyone at all? Hearing and seeing no one, close public testimony. Any rebuttal, Mr. Carlson?
No rebuttal.
Thank you, sir. With regard to case 2015-0099, it's the will of the body. Mr. Walker, would you like to state your motion?
In the case of 2015-0099, I move for approval with the departments, with the revised department recommendations from the November 2nd, 2015 memorandum, G3, and I hand it out tonight.
And Mr. Spinelli seconds. Mr. Spring?
I'd just like to clarify for the record that, and with respect to condition number two...
two, that the plans that we're approving include the submittals that we received tonight with respect to the Sixth Avenue view, site plan, and floor plans, just for clarification.
Was that your intent, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Ferguson?
Mr. Chair, in the motion, could it be stated that you're addressing both of the conditional uses? I think it was just to approve the case.
Correct, there are two in, in the department's recommendation.
Just to clarify.
That was your intent, Mr. Walker?
Yes, so I would move that we approve both conditional uses, sorry.
The conditional uses, the site plan's incorporated into the conditional use.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any objections? That motion carries, thank you. Do we have any findings? Mr. Spring, I know you had.
Oh, I think, yeah, I'll make some findings, sure. I think, well, the proposed submittal and approved plans meet the conditional use standards in Title 21. And also it meets the, I believe it meets the intent of the downtown comprehensive plan. I think it'll be a nice addition to the fabric of the downtown. Also like, maybe not finding, but compliment the staff on working out their differences with the, and suggestions with the, the petitioner. I think it resolved itself very well and I'm, I'm think, I'm very happy with the result.
Thank you. Any other findings?
Yeah, only that it seems, this approval seems to meet with the standards and the downtown, where did it go, Community Council was in support of it, so.
Anything else, Ms. Dean, Mr. Spinelli? Committee reports, Mr. Walker? Or do you have something prior to that?
I had a question. So we are postponing the Choi rezon, or whatever, the, we postponed S12221. Is our material going to change? Are they proposing any changes to that or do we need to hang on to that material?
Through the chair, Mr. Walker, we'll bring 122, S12221 up next week. That's the next available meeting, so, and there shouldn't be any changes, they just postponed because of the shortboard issue. So please do save your materials and your packets will be courier to you tomorrow for next week's meeting. My apologies, we didn't have it finished for tonight.
And then with regard to 2015-0093, with their traffic, whatever it is they're doing, is the packet going to change at all? Should we get rid of it? Should we get, just hang on to it?
You only have a postponement memo for that case, so you don't actually have a staff report. So you can throw away your postponement memo.
Okay.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yes, yes, I have one.
Ms. Dean and then Mr. Spring.
Oh, sorry.
Through the chair, my question of staff is, have you guys heard if there is a replacement starting and when they are starting?
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, I was told that there would be new appointments before the end of the year, but I don't have any other details than that.
Okay.
We, we continue to ask and.
That's okay.
Not hear the details.
That would be fine, I just was wondering, I had heard there was a possibility of next month that somebody would replace me, but, okay, thank you.
Go on the hook. Mr. Spring and then Ms. McConnell?
Yeah, the, I think we're still lacking the representative on the AMAT's Citizen Advisory Committee, unless I'm wrong, unless somebody's been, Tyler's forced somebody to step forward. I talked it over with the AMAT's coordinator and I think I worked out conflict of interest type of issues and I think at this time I'd be willing to serve on that committee.
Great, you're nominated.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your calendar indicates that no cases were submitted for the December 14th meeting and while that is the case, that there were no cases, we do intend to bring the marijuana ordinance to you at that meeting, so please be prepared to attend a December 14th meeting. Thank you.
And speaking of that, if you could give my regards to everyone, I have an unexpected work appointment tomorrow that I will not make the 10 o'clock meeting. I know it's 10 to 11:30, I'll try and rush down there if I get done, you know, at a reasonable hour, but I do regret that I won't be able to make it, the meeting. Mr. Spring? It's, what do you call it, community or?
The Title 21, no, I'm sorry, it's the Community and Economic Development Committee of the Assembly upon which Mr. Robinson and Mr. Kange sit and I believe Mr. Sporhase is the alternate. And then also Mr. Kange is a member of the subgroup of the drafting new cell tower regs group.
Can I ask a question? I understand that maybe everybody already knows is that there's no directors meeting on Wednesday?
That's correct. We'd like to hold it next week, if that's possible.
I have a, I have an issue I just kind of throw up here, tell me whether it's off-base or not, but in the UMed district plan, there was some discussion about transfer development rights and I'm glad the director's here because I don't think we're really ready to deal with that next week when it comes up, right? It comes up next week to approve, right? It's on the agenda. I, I don't, I'd like to have a discussion about transfer development rights because I know we have them in some plans identified as a strategy, but.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any, the implementation ordinances in place to do it and I don't know how it would work specifically given our Title 21 or whatever. I think we need to have a discussion because I'm afraid we're going to get into that meeting on, next week and we're going to have to make a decision about transfer development rights and we, we don't know anything about it.
Those are all good concerns and that happened to be my master's thesis and then I ran a program in Wacom County preserving the watershed around Lake Wacom for 180,000 people to drink out of. So it's a successful program, but you're absolutely right and the administrative piece needs to be well-written in order for it to function properly.
So do we, what's your opinion? Do we need to, Mr. Chair, do we need to talk about it or have at least a presentation at the meeting or, is this going to come up, I think?
I think that would be a good question for Mr. Robinson to work out with the staff to, to bring to us to, to look at for sure. I mean, I agree, it's going to come up at some point.
Probably next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the meeting is what day next week? Monday? Oh, this is Monday, yeah.
Probably, is it too, would it be too quickly to get something for, you know, this, if we're not having a meeting Thursday, it's probably not feasible to throw something together for us for Thursday.
If we could have the meeting on Wednesday, that might be a better option to at least, at least by that time I can work with the staff team to see what we already have in place. Even if we adopted the UMed plan, I think what I would recommend then, it would be a schedule for adopting and implementing ordinances. If, if nothing's written, then it's going to take a while to adopt the implementing ordinances and, and put the administrative pieces together. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just, yeah, thank you.
Well, then, maybe, I think that's good. So we can't have a meeting this week because I believe you're leaving, you're going to be out of town.
I should be here Wednesday through noon.
So we're going to need, if we can't have a meeting and talk about transfer development rights to understand it better, we're going to need some direction from staff regarding how to incorporate that in the UMed district plan. Because I don't think, I'm not capable of doing that, I can't, I won't be able to come up with something ad hoc. I, I'm not sure I'm in favor of it, but maybe other members are and maybe I will too eventually, but, so I don't, I just don't know how to incorporate that in the plan if we decide to go ahead with it. I want to do it right so that we don't mess it up. Or maybe, maybe there's something, we could make a general recommendation on how to investigate that and leave it to staff, I have no clue how to go about doing it.
Yeah, I, actually, I think that's, at this point, this evening, that's what I would say, that if I can look into it for a few hours in the morning, you know, my recommendation might change. I just, I'm not sure what we've adopted previously.
So do you, do you feel like meeting Wednesday before noon? I mean, is that a possible, possibility for, is that what you're saying, this Wednesday?
That's my, that's my availability and, but I will look over to Erica.
We have the Assembly Committee from 11, or 10 to 11:30, so doesn't leave a lot of time.
Yeah. And I don't want to be the only one at the meeting either, so I think it's something that everybody has to be involved in if we're going to.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's an interesting idea, I think we should probably look at it, but I, I think we need to get some background and understand it better, but, oh, well, I'll, well, I think you heard my, my concern, so I'll leave it at that.
Just one more thing before I entertain a motion to adjourn, staff has asked us to hand back a couple of the documents that were in our, our packet, so on our way out, just drop that off. I think it's the downtown comprehensive plan and some other plan.